I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission, November 26, 2019, meeting at 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum. Our first item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the October 29, 2019, regular meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes pass. First item of business, final plat, lot 4B of Interchain City Industrial Park, requested by Grisham Smith, property located at Waldron Road and Hail Quaker Boulevard, tax map 17-0, group A, parcels 2 and 1.01, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Timothy Young and David Kennedy Jr. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This item is the final plat for the property that is tied to item 2, which we'll hear in a few minutes. So this is making way for the new racetrack development, which is a gas station and a retail center, or I guess you'd say a retail store that'll sell food and various things. And that is at the corner of Hail Quaker and Waldron Road. And this plat is just a combination plat that puts the two lots together. So that'd be parcel 2 and parcel 1.01 on map 17-0. And the total acreage together of the parcels is 4.12 acres. And of course, there's no new roads being built and no infrastructure, so no preliminary plat is required. And there were no technical items, so that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board? We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept or submitted.
We have a motion to accept or submitted.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, site plan racetrack requested by Grisham Smith, property located on Waldron Road, tax map 17-0, group A, parcel 2 and 1.01, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Racetrack Petroleum, Inc. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. And again, this is the racetrack site plan that will consist of a fuel center, both for autos and tractor trailers. And it is at the corner of Hail Quaker, South Waldron, or excuse me, Hail Quaker and Waldron. And the retail facility, the market, is supposed to be 8,100 square feet. And this is the latest on the screen, the latest update to the site plan. And so you see the corner here, this is Hail Quaker, and then running north to south is Waldron Road. So nearest to the corner would be the place for the automobiles and the fuel for the autos and also vacuums. And then the rear of the site is for heavy trucks and tractor trailers. And you can see there, the two arrows that are entering the site, so it's a one-way in here, and then the other ingress-egress is two arrows exiting. So about six months ago, when this first came in, it didn't exactly look that way, but staff worked with Racetrack to get it to here. So this is the rear lot, and of course, it'll be one lot when it's completed, but today this is the rear lot. And here's the architectural elevations. And since day one, they proposed a lot of brick. I think it's mostly entirely brick. And they also have the full-size color elevations in your packets. And just some site photos, so this building sits on the corner lot, and so it'll be demolished. And it's got different stores in it, or it's got some offices and some retail. There's a State Farm office in that building. And then the second lot is...
Kind of a machine shop?
Yeah, is a machine shop. And that'll also be demolished to make way for this project. And Fastenal also has signage on that first building. And that pretty much completes the photos. I don't think we've left anything out. I don't even think there are any engineering comments outstanding, so that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Coats?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think we've had this several months, and they've addressed all the items that we requested them to do, and we have the document here, which is nice to see, so I think they've met all the requirements. So with that, I'll make a motion to accept or submit.
We have a motion to accept. We have a second.
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Onto our next item. Item number three, preliminary plat, the Retreat at Finch Branch, requested by Huddleston Steel, P-L-L-C. Property located off Irvin Road and Greenwood Drive, tax map 017L, group A, parcel 8, R2 medium-density residential zoning district, property owned by Rick Resha. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a preliminary plat request for the Retreat at Finch Branch. And this site is at intersection of Irvin Road and Greenwood Drive. And you can see here in the image, it's about a 90-degree turn, so it's really not an intersection today, it's more of just a 90-degree curve, but that will be where the new entrance is made for the Retreat at Finch Branch. And this phase, phase one, covers about 12.1 acres. And in this phase also will be 28 lots for single-family dwellings. And the entire project is owned R2, single-family, and so they're not proposing any other types of dwellings, just all single-family. And it is, there you can see on the zoning map, it's owned R2. And all the technical items have been addressed for this phase. There's under other concerns, it does say, number one, downstream sewer is at capacity. And number two, new construction plans to include lot changes and roadway adjustments need to be submitted for review prior to final plat acceptance. Other than that, there's no other items. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I just have a question. With the downstream sewer at capacity, is this the one that this neighborhood connect to, Mr. Leach?
The, there's sufficient capacity for phase one of this development, but any future phases, we're gonna have to wait till we finish the Chaney Woods Interceptor project, which is currently happening. So I think the city's gonna beat the developer on this one, but it's always good to have that caveat in there, so they don't come looking for phase two before we get that interceptor done.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments?
One question for the engineer, if he's around, please.
A representative for this project, please step to the podium. Name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Steve. Steel with Huddleston Steel Engineering, we're at 2115 Northwest Broad in Murfreesboro.
Thank you, sir.
Just one question, all the lots you presented are buildable and meet the requirements of the, all the setback requirements?
Yes, sir.
Just wanna make sure we're on there.
Very good.
With that, you know, it's all the comments.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. And I'm not saying that we need to do anything with this, but just for the record, in another municipality, I am dealing with a mailbox kiosk situation, which is a little new for all of us. Used to have mailboxes at the end of the driveway, and now the requirement is a mailbox kiosk. Our fire department still is gonna be dependent on house numbers, and having those house numbers somewhere on the property, typically, they were on the mailbox, but the mailbox won't necessarily be there. Other municipalities are moving in the direction of requiring some type of plate be affixed either at the end of the street, or at the edge of the street, or somewhere prominent on the dwelling to where that house number is present, so that emergency services can tell, you know, which house is which. At present, I don't think that we have any type of ordinance like that, but that's gonna be very, very important. And so responsible developers and builders are gonna need to be aware of that and help us out a little bit as we make this adjustment with the postal service going to these mailbox kiosks.
Very, very good comment, and we will make sure. And I'm gonna assume with homeowners, that's gonna be addressed on this project to start with, so, but we do need to get something to make sure that it does happen, doesn't get overlooked.
Yeah. And then I brought up at the workshop about putting some rumble strips at this three-way intersection. That's new, just because everyone's used to just going right around that curve. And so just as a kind of alert and warning that there's a stop there. That's still something that we're able to work with the developer on?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Those will be included in the construction plans. We'll basically follow the manual uniform traffic control devices, guidance on new intersections, so it'll, if you're familiar with what they did with Chaney, it'll be very similar to that.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item. Item number four, amendment to the zoning ordinance, amend 4.070, standards for signs, restricting portable signs on all city property, presented by Mayor Cole and Mr. Logan. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This sign project, it originally started out to address political signs, and over the past, I guess, five months, it's grown to include some other rewriting of the sign code. And so this afternoon, there was a version emailed out to you all, and also printed off a hard copy that was laying right up there, but one of you all may have it. With the latest, and those, that latest version includes Mr. Coats' comments and changes. And so I think if you all are comfortable, you can decide if you wanna move ahead.
I think, just to kind of sum up the changes that are being made, is number one, we're getting political signs off city property. And if you look at the last election, it was just, it was a mess. So we wanna present a professional look to our residents and our business partners. So the other thing that's been changed with this by Graham Coats is the banner, as far as exemptions for those, instead of it just automatically being exempted, it's gonna have to go through the regular process. Is that...
That's correct.
And I read it this afternoon, it looked very good and very fair across the board, it was very well put together by both Mr. Coats and our legal department staff, so sometimes these things take a little time, but we're coming together on it.
So with that, I'll make a, send a favorable recommendation to Mayor Altman to the zoning ordinance as presented.
I would second that.
We have a motion for favorable recommendation to Mayor Altman with a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We will be sending a favorable recommendation to the board of Mayor Altman. Our next item, first item under new business. Site plan, Summer Creek Town Homes, requested by Huddleston Steel, property located on Madison Square Boulevard, tax map 15, parcel 2.14, R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Summer Creek Apartments, LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a site plan for Summer Creek Town Homes. This property is owned R3, and it has been for a very long time. On the screen, you can see the Summer Creek Apartments, and you can see the general layout here, and this vacant area to the north, it's kind of a meadow, is gonna be where these new townhomes are built. And they're showing a total of 43 on the plan, so 43 units, and they're all two-story. And also, I believe they've shown you some of the, a portion of the architectural elevations that they're proposing. And this was here in August for the first time, and so it's been a few months that it's been here, and they've worked with staff, as staff has asked them to make changes, and they have made all those changes. And there were some, there's been discussions about sidewalks and the city's greenway and tying into that, and so they are agreeing to build a part of the connection, and I think the city's gonna come back and build at some point the rest of that connection. And I believe, now there's an issue, maybe the last meeting, about where one of the speed bumps was, and I think that's been worked out. So other than that, they've addressed all of the technical comments, so that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just one for the engineers, just to make sure on the speed bump, I mean, has staff said, agreed, your ingredients with what was agreed to on the speed bumps?
Yes. Mr. Steel?
Very good.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next item, site plan, Skyline Exhibit Source, requested by Huddleston Steel, property located at 144 Bain Drive, tax map 14, parcel 7.02, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by John A. Armani, Armari. My apologies. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is the site plan for Skyline Exhibit Source, and this site is 5.15 acres, and it does have an existing building on the site that you can see here in the imagery. The existing building is 56,927 square feet, and the proposed addition will add about 44,000 square feet to that, roughly 57. So there'll be a little bit over 100,000 square feet when it's all built out. And the property's located on the south side of Bain, and you can see there, it's I-2, which is a dark blue color, and basically, this whole area is I-2. The cul-de-sac that you see here, that's outlined in blue, so that is Longview Street, and that property, the cul-de-sac, has been abandoned over the last year or so. And so that's what that is. So this area here, that, right now, it's just a lot of trees, and it's not developed, but that's where this picture is taken here. So this is the end of their building, and basically, just a metal construction, but there is an area there that's not been developed, and they're looking to use that area to build this addition. And let's see, there's a few technical items. They addressed the planning comments, but there's a few engineering comments here, so I'll let Mr. Leach speak to those. Thanks.
Mr. Leach, sir?
Mr. Chairman, there was no backflow preventer shown. All commercial and industrial buildings within the city of Laverne are required to have a reduced pressure backflow device. Per cross-connection standards that we had approved by the state, they did not indicate how or if the buildings will connect and what the roof line would look like. They did not indicate in their drainage study, or drainage report, their method for attaining 80% to will suspend its solid removal. As I mentioned last time, the proposed pond does not appear to be adequate, given that a similarly sized pond is being removed. The drainage calculations only accounted for 1.91 acres, the entire site is 4.95 acres. So if you remove the drainage pond that's serving the existing, you have to make up that volume somewhere. Roof drains need to be noticed, hanging in the storm sewer. The existing water line on Longview is not indicated on the plan, and the two-inch, a two-inch water line is indicated as serving the building. This building is required to be sprinkled, as it's over 5,000 feet by city of Laverne ordinance, 10,000 feet by the International Building Code, so to actually sprinkle a building of this size, you need a six-inch water line.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Is there a representative here this evening for this project? Name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, sir. Steve Steel, Huddleston Steel, 2115 Northwest Broad.
Do you have a copy of these items, sir?
I do, I did, and I felt like we had addressed them. I don't know if you wanna go through them right now, or...
Yeah, we can talk afterwards, if you'd like.
I think we have addressed them all. Just one that jumps out is the reduced pressure backflow preventer is shown, there's a, it's shown in symbol, and in the legend, it explains what it is.
Okay.
The, another one I heard was a detention pond. Actually, this original building in the site was developed prior to detention being a requirement of this community or any other communities around here. When an addition was made several years back, a detention pond was added for the addition and for the property to the east that drains toward it. So what we've got is that addition, the property to the east, and the new addition is really all that goes to it. That's why it doesn't, the calculations don't say five acres, or... I mean, I feel confident we can, we can meet them all. I thought we had, I'm sorry we haven't talked about that.
I'm feeling in the middle, to be honest with you.
Mr. Leach?
You know, we, they'll still have to revise the two-inch water line, 'cause this building's gonna have to be sprinkled, that is a definite revision. You know, I'm still, I'm still on the edge about the pond, 'cause it appears to be, volumetrically, it just doesn't necessarily make sense, and there was no, you know, drainage map provided indicating that routing for the water in the drainage report I received, so I can't...
With there being so many revisions, Mr. Steel, would you like to go ahead and defer this, so we can kinda have a clean slate when we look at it next month and be done with it?
Is that okay, John?
Sure.
Yeah, I feel confident that these technical items can be addressed.
Especially with the two-inch, so we'll look at it at workshop, we'll get through it. We always do.
I think that's the best choice, that way, both Adam and Mr. Steel can get on the same page with the detention and everything.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Steel. That will be moving on to the next item. Final plat, Sorda Property, requested by Edward Miller, property located on Sunset Drive, tax map 18A, parcel 23, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Juan Sorda and Selena Alfaro. Mr. Logan.
This one is deferred, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, sir. Thank you. Next item, site plan, AM Rentals, requested by Fulmer Engineering, property located at 181 Industrial Boulevard, tax map 29, parcel 3.05, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by J.P.S. Properties. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a site plan for Ahorn Rentals, and been prepared by Fulmer Engineering, and this site is an existing site, like some of the others tonight, and it's located near I-24, basically right beside I-24, on Industrial Drive. So you can see industrial parallels, I-24, and this is the site that they're looking to develop. They're doing a lot of parking lot changes, they're not really adding to the building, but a lot of parking and changes to the asphalt around the building. This is, the existing building's a one-story building, and just composed of block and metal siding. And you can see the photo there. And they do have a chain-link fence that they put up not too long ago, and that was to protect and secure the equipment and vehicles on the site. So there was some discussion about that two weeks ago, and there's some of their lifts. But basically, it's just block and a metal building, basic industrial building. The plan shows existing building is just shy of 30,000 square feet, and you can see there's a loading dock here, covered loading dock, on the north side of the building. And they, basically, last meeting, they didn't have a lot to address, since they're not building or adding on to a building, but there were a few items that were brought up, and they've all been addressed, so there's no more technical items remaining, and that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I see one sentence here, a total of 41 parking spaces being provided. Has that been addressed?
Yes, that can come off. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
We're discussing about the fence, did we ever get that resolved, what's happened with the fence?
Mr. Logan? Black architectural fencing?
Rott iron.
Rott iron. Is there a representative here this evening?
That was discussed two weeks ago, whether to go with orange or black.
Kevin Eats of Fulmer Engineering, 2002, Richard Jones Road, Nashville. So the fence, we discussed, they had initially, they had the chain link, which they're replacing with the kind of black aluminum wrought iron look fence. You know, there, we had a, we'd mentioned two weeks ago, their standard is orange, and you guys were not a fan of the orange, and so we've put black on the plans for now.
Very nice. Thank you. Mr. Cole?
We discussed some about sidewalks there, and personally, for that location, it's not heavily foot traffic, I'm not necessarily jumping up and down about it. Mr. Leach, didn't really hear your opinion on that, so I wanted to just kinda ask you about it with that specific area.
Well, as I kinda touched on last time, in most cities, this type of development wouldn't necessarily even require a site plan, it would just be ran through the engineer, because strictly speaking, they're just addressing some drainage and adding some pavement, and most of it's probably already gravel and generally impervious anyway, from the way the curb numbers that they provided in their drainage report looked. So essentially, making someone build a sidewalk to put in a parking lot's a little, I'm not gonna say outside the norm, but it's, it's asking a lot of an applicant to do a parking lot and then a sidewalk, when they're not really changing their building. Of course, that's just my opinion, those are your restrictions, and I'm sure this gentleman, you see a lot of variations on it, but it is an industrial area, there's no connecting sidewalks, there's not really any locality someone would want to walk to at this location, 'cause it's kinda further down industrial. And, you know, we do have specific exceptions within our subdivision ordinance for this type of thing, but this is a site development, so the, in my opinion, they're not strictly necessary, but it's my opinion.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as of right now, they're not proposed? Or are?
They're not.
They're not.
I'd like, I don't see the fence that will be used anywhere in the drawings. I see a description of the chain link, but I see that even on top of retaining walls and things of that nature. And I'd really like to see that fence that's going to be across the front elevation of this, of this property. Seeing that, I think lends itself toward, you know, well, just how inviting is this going to be? How much of a change is that going to be to the facade of this building as you drive past, as you get an impression of Laverne from the interstate? This is visible to everyone who passes through Laverne and says, oh, yep, right over there's Laverne, and see that nice architectural fence across there and that sidewalk in front of it? Laverne takes care of their stuff. I'd like to see a little more developed. I know that essentially, we're making, you know, hardscape, change-
know, hardscape changes here, but I think that there are some front door impressions that, that matter, I'd like to see this go through the process one more time, that we may see some of those improvements, if, if the, if the new neighbor would, would like to help out in raising the profile in Laverne.
And we did, per your all's request, you know, beef up the landscaping, the main reason we're concerned about the sidewalks, you can see that, that entrance is fairly steep.
Yeah.
So, you know, adding a sidewalk to meet ADA standards requires more than just, we'd end up reworking a big portion of that entrance to make it all to slopes, so that was the bigger reason we were, we were kind of hesitant on the sidewalk, was, was to meet the ADA requirements at that entrance, that entrance right now is anywhere from 6% to 10%, so to keep it, you know, to give a five-foot wide, 2%, slope crossing for a sidewalk, would require us to go good ways to catch back up into the existing facility.
Visually, I can understand where Mr. Altman is wanting to see a sample of the fence, my concern would be more with the gating, the type of gating would be used.
I believe it's normally a sliding gate, and they keep it open during the day, it's just when their business hours are, are, you know, off business hours, they just keep it closed.
Is that something that we need on the plans, Mr. Leach?
Typically, aesthetic features outside of your overlay districts are kind of, they're requests, so to speak, they're not technical items, you could have, you know, the engineer agree to it at the meeting, and we could annotate that on the notes, and I'm sure Mr. Sawyers would be happy to enforce what he can of that, or?
Oh, hi, here's the fence.
I believe it's a, it's a five or six feet, it's five or six feet, it's similar to that height, it's just a different, and I called out, I called out a manufacturer and type on the plans, I could have provided, I probably should have provided an actual photo of their general standard, but I believe it's on the site layout plan, it's one of the keynotes, calls out a, if I remember, it's a Ameristar, maybe, I don't remember the brand, the manufacturer off the top of my head, but it's on the site layout plan, which I believe is 2.0.
If you could maybe pull up a picture of it for the planning commission, that might be helpful, I mean, I don't know what an Ameristar looks like off the top of my head.
I don't either, it's a fence I've used in other facilities, it was actually used at a assisted living facility, so it's kind of a nicer looking fence, it's not a, it's not even generally an industrial type fence, but I can pull it up.
So if it's annotated in the notes, that would be fine from a enforcement standpoint, if it meets what you guys are hoping for.
As there is additional redevelopment on Industrial Boulevard, it may be the fence that we suggest or require from neighboring properties, and so that's one of the reasons why I wanna carefully consider it, because you guys, we're appreciative of the fact that you're, you know, sprucing this up, making it nice, making it better, but whatever that template is, it might be repeated all the way down the street, and as such, we wanna be careful and make sure that we set the right precedent.
Come up here and show you that.
Absolutely, please, sir.
That's similar style.
Okay.
I don't know the exact manufacturer, but it'll be something a little similar to that.
Very nice. Far improvement from chain link, is it not?
Yeah, that's, I've pulled it up as well.
Very good.
Like I said, I've used it at, used it at a assisted living facility, so it's, it's a nicer fence.
Yeah. Very good. Any other questions or comments? Put this to a vote, and see which one we got, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept is submitted, with the fence included.
I would second that.
We have a motion to accept is submitted with fence included, with a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item. Thank you, sir. Number nine, set bond amount for the ridge, section one, property located on Lake Road, requested by Mitchell Bowman, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, Mr. Logan.
This is acceptance for, subdivision acceptance for the ridge, section one, and it is 37 lots, and you see there on the imagery.
Mr. Logan, number nine, set bond amount for the ridge?
My number nine is recommendation for subdivision acceptance.
Yeah. Am I looking at the wrong sheet?
Yeah.
My apologies, everyone.
Recommendation, acceptance.
Okay, I was looking at the wrong sheet, my apologies. Item number nine, recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Altman for subdivision acceptance, the ridge, section one, property located on Lake Road, requested by Mitchell Bowman, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, my apologies, Mr. Logan, thank you.
Okay, so this is the ridge, and they're asking for subdivision acceptance, and just on phase one, and this is off Lake Road, in the south part of Laverne, off South Walden Road, and section one is comprised of 37 lots, and with, now that it's built out, it's probably close to 37 homes, and they've met all the requirements for the punch list, and so they've notified staff that they're requesting acceptance, and there were no deficient items from any of staff, thank you.
Very good, any questions or comments?
All the manhole covers are down.
They have adjusted all the castings to finish grade, there's no longer any seven-inch speed bumps.
It's very nice over there.
Just, just had a conversation with the resident about that, so.
Well, with staff saying they've handled, addressed all the items, I'll send a favorable recommendation to Mayor Altman for acceptance of the subdivision.
We have a motion for a favorable recommendation, do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. And our final item, bonds and letters of credit update, Mr. Leach?
The only real change from last month is we had one, one more home completed, the ridge phase one renewed their letter of credit, of course, we just accepted them, so that will eventually be dropped, but in the meantime, we have the full amount until we drop it, and they get their irrevocable dedication, and all that worked out, that's, that's the only real change of note.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Leach, like, thank everybody, and we hope everyone has a happy holidays, meeting adjourned.